I now call the January 3, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting to order. At this time, if you'll take a moment and silence your cellphones. I'll ask on it the Clerk, Lynda, to please call the roll call. Chairman Morgan?
Here.
Vice Chairman McClendon?
Here.
Commissioner Chance?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Fuller?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Bailey?
Here.
At this time, we would like to welcome Commissioner Bailey to our team. And one of his first new roles, he's going to lead us in invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. It's nice to have you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here. We will go ahead and pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day, Father. We thank you for the blessings you give us each and every day. Father, we ask you to forgive us of our sins and where we fail you on a daily basis, Father. Father, we just thank you for letting us come together to do the business of the county. Father, we just ask blessings upon each and every one of these men and women that serve. Father, and just thank you for the employees that's here, Father, and the citizens of this county. Father, we just ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I'll now ask for a motion and a second for the approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion, Mary.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. All those in favor? Motion passes, seven zero. We now have approval of the minutes. We have 6.1, which is November 30, 2022, our special call meeting. We have 6.2, which is November 30, 2022, Commissioners Executive Session. We have 6.3, another Board of Commissioners Work Session Minutes from December 1, 2022. And 6.4, we have Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes from December 6, 2022. And another special call meeting on December 9, 2022. If I could have a motion and a second for those, please.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, six zero. We're now on number seven, public comments. Public comments are an opportunity for the public to address the commission with any issues or concerns they may have. All remarks should be directed to the chairman, not to individual commissioners, staff, or citizens in attendance. Members of the public should not make any inappropriate or offensive comments. Any individual who violates the rules decorum may be removed from the meeting. At this time, the board will not comment, nor will the board take any action on the comments. And speakers are limited to three minutes. At this time, we have Kelly Height, who signed up in the back. And then I will make sure to ask if anyone who did not sign up, if they would like to speak following Kelly.
My name is Kelly Height. My address is 6009 Spring Street, Villarica, Georgia, 30180. I'm here tonight on behalf of Animal Control of Carroll County. I've been here several times to talk about animal control. And as I flip through your agenda for tonight that y'all have approved to go over, I see what you've approved. You're talking about a new fire truck, a lease for the mental health facility down at the middle school at the fire station in Villarica, which is where we just happened to trap one pit bull and nine puppies today that have been living on the streets for a year now. Carroll County, when I was there this morning dropping off five cats for TNR, has 600-plus dogs. Your facility was built for 500. You're way over capacity. I've been coming since February of last year, and the number at the county shelter continuously goes up. The only thing that has not went up is the number of adoption events, the number of ordinances that are being put through the Carroll County court system for the ordinances that are already in place. Each day, we struggle in Villarica with the stray animals. You continuously look to develop the community and offer more things for the community. But the one thing you haven't offered is a solution to the stray animals that run the streets. Carroll County Animal Control, as well as many other animal controls, are continuously put on the back burner because it's something nobody wants to see. You might as well go ahead and look for your next million-dollar or $3-million shelter because that's what it's going to take to handle. Y'all are pushing more dogs in Carroll County than Fulton and DeKalb County together. Someone needs to make a stand and develop a program that can work with your county shelter, that will enforce the ordinances that we already have in place. We need more spay and neuter clinics. Since I started coming in February of last year, we've had one low-cost spay and neuter clinic. We've had 14 adoption events, big adoption events. Out of those adoption events, I know for a fact that three of those dogs were dumped at Hurson County. There's no way to possibly fund Carroll County AC to where they can go out and do the proper home checks to make sure people are. But there are registration formats and programs that are in place that people can get for their counties and their municipalities that are really cheap and low cost, that will help people register their animals. And upon registration, instead of paying a fee, you should offer, if they spay and neuter their animals, to slow the population down, a discounted fee for that. There's also a law department at the University of Georgia that offers to go over your ordinances for free, at no cost to you, and revamp them and give them back to you. That was one of the issues when I first started, was there weren't any time, and they didn't want to spend the money or the time to revamp the ordinances that they revamped back in 2018, which took a step backwards in how we treat animals in Carroll County. The influx of people in Carroll County is not going to slow down. We have to develop a plan to help animal control. They are overwhelmed. Thank you.
At this time, is there anyone else who'd like to speak during the public comments section? I'll ask again if there's anyone else here that would like to speak during the public comments section. Okay, well, hearing and seeing none, we will move on. We, at this time, have a special presentation. I'm going to call Mr. James "Pete" Gamble to the front, please. So Mr. Gamble has served the Carroll County Board of Elections, starting in 1976 until 2022. I tried to talk him into several more years, so he hit a nice 50 instead of 46. But this time, we are truly indebted to all you have done to help elections in Carroll County. So we have a special plaque for you.
Thank you, Mr. Gamble.
Not only do we appreciate his 46 years, he came out in this rain tonight to receive his plaque, so... Again, Mr. Gamble, thank you so very, very much. We will now move into the zoning session. I'll call Ben Skipper from P Development Forward. At this time, the applicant or anyone speaking in favor of the application or request shall be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present their request. Anyone opposed to the request shall also have a total of 10 minutes to present their opposition. If there are multiple speakers for or against the application, remember, it's a total of 10 minutes. So if one person takes up all 10, that's all there is. There will also be a time for rebuttal of five minutes on each side. So at this point, Ben, if you'll present our conditional use for 851 Shirey Dairy Road.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. 851 Shirey Dairy Road is consideration for owner applicant Ken and Allison Nesbit. They request a conditional use permit for a secondary detax dwelling, line in Landlots 39 of 11th District, parcel number 095-0090, located at 851 Shirey Dairy Road. The property is located in Commissioner District 5. The planning and zoning staff recommended approval of the application. The Planning Commission, public hearing held, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval also. Is the applicant present? Let's see him. With storm, they were down around RuPaul and Dan from public work, so there was a bad storm. But the public hearing has been held. Do we want to just move forward?
I was going to say, is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here to speak against the application?
There was no opposition at the planning and zoning meeting either.
Okay. So should we go ahead and just go on with the weather the way it is? Or would you like me to go? you like me to go on to a few more things and then come back?
We have to have a hearing now, so.
You're my then.
Yeah, we can, since you conducted the hearing, you can go ahead and ask questions and then vote. Okay. So I guess at this point, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Five, since this is in your district, and I'm sure you may have spoken to the applicants or...
Yeah, I rode down there a week or so ago. This is on a gravel road section of Shirey Dairy, completely rural district. I'm familiar with that. In fact, the Edsons live in that area, and their son used to work with me at State Department of Audit, so I've had zero calls or inquiries about it, no complaints, and I have no qualms about moving forward and making a motion to approve the application as presented.
And I'll explain a little bit about what it is. The, what they're asking for, they have an existing home with an existing pool, and I guess what you would call an existing pool house, which is very small, has a bathroom in it, a changing room. What they want to do is expand that building, but the expansion will be over twelve hundred and thirty square feet. They don't intend for it to be a living quarters, but they wanted, for at the pool, people will be able to go into this building to change clothes, use the bathroom, be able to cook, entertain. But because of the way the code's read, they didn't, it's over twelve hundred and thirty square feet. So technically, it's a house, because it has a bathroom, a kitchen, and it's got heat and air. But that's, you know. So really, that's really what they're asking for. They're asking to expand an existing facility.
Are there any further questions for Ben or for Commissioner Reynolds? Do you want to put that into a formal motion, then?
Sure. I make a motion to approve the conditional use application as presented.
So I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or any further questions for staff? Well, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of approving that's application? Any not approving?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Hey, could you get those drawings to Commissioner Reynolds?
I can.
Maybe he could extend his pool house.
Actually, I slid a, I slid them into everybody's, and I know Ann was talking about one too, so maybe you want to, maybe you want to get a new pool and build a pool house at your house.
We'll now move on to the business session. Traditionally, Danny, we normally do the financial recap at a work session, but because we canceled it with the holiday, we are now going to move into the financial recap for November, and I'm going to call Alicia Cersey, the Director of Finance, to the podium, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good evening. We've completed our November financials, which you have gotten a packet of. At the end of November, we had total revenues of thirty-seven million, four hundred and twelve thousand. That's about fifty-five point eight percent of our budgeted revenue. The property tax collections are going well. Our taxes as a whole are going well. Commissioner Chance and I were speaking before the meeting, and it does look like we're seeing some economic slowdown. We've seen a downward trend in our intangible tax and our real estate recording tax, as well as our building permits. So even though the other taxes, sales tax, property tax, seem to be doing well, we have seen some slowdown. So just a heads up on that. Our departments, expenditures are looking good. The Superior Court, we have some grant money that's due back there, so their revenue, I mean, their expenses are actually showing a couple of months of grand expenditures that will be reimbursed by the state of Georgia on that. Overall, our expenditures are forty-two point three percent of our, of our budget, so we're in good shape there. And just kind of an update on SPOLOST. As y'all know, we've got a plan now for our admin building, and we'll be moving forward. We'll see a constant flow of expenditures there as we move through that process. We continue to do work at the Villarica Fire Station. We all discussed the strategy on purchasing vehicles. Through the end of November, we had purchased eleven of those vehicles. So the Public Works Department's done a really good job in negotiating pricing on those. I think just about all of those have come in under the bid price that we received on all of the units. So they've gone out and searched local dealerships and a little beyond to try to get new vehicles in here for us. So that's kind of a summary of our, of our SPOLOST money.
Ms. Cersey, I would just add, besides the points you've already gone over, we're doing well. Our recreation fees are up a hundred and twenty-five thousand over prior year-to-date. Our park fees are up sixty-two thousand over prior year-to-date. While we've got some line items, as you say, that could indicate a slowdown, looking at our total revenues, we're over projection by about four million over prior year-to-date. Looking at prior year-to-date and current year-to-date, we went up on our budget about eight million, so we're in the fifth month of the fiscal year, and we've already met half of that threshold. So even if we continue to see somewhat of a downturn, I think we're right on target with our revenues, so that looks good to me.
Just one quick thing. I always go through the detailed year-to-date budget report with, as Commissioner Chance just mentioned, the number of months in mind. Since this is November, you would expect each department relatively to have something less than fifty percent of their budget. As you mentioned, the couple of the courts, I think it was Superior Court and Probate Court, a little bit over that, but no big deal. I also mentioned, noticed though, where solid waste collection is at above fifty-nine percent. And with our department director here, I just wanted to cover that. Is there anything unique there that we might expect, any necessary budget amendment, or why it's at about sixty percent, where, as the calendar's about at forty percent?
You know, we just continue to see an influx of trash. You know, our tonnage is up, and so the answer could be yes, we may be looking at a budget amendment going down the road there. We'll continue to keep an eye on it, and the Christmas season tells a lot as far as where you're going to be on trash. So rolling into January, February, I think we'll have a pretty good idea of where we expect a budget amendment on that.
Okay. Could you give just a brief explanation, Alicia, of the three line items in solid waste collection? So we've got trash expense, eighty-three percent, and then tipping fees at only thirty percent, but the convenience center is above a hundred percent.
Well, the convenience centers are the cost that it actually takes to run the locations. So the labor and the utility costs that are associated with that. The tipping fees is what Carroll County pays to the transfer station for Carroll County waste. And remind me what the third one is.
The third is trash expense.
Um.
It's at eighty-three percent.
Oh, that's going to be the fees that we pay to have the, yeah, to have the trash moved from the convenience center to the landfill.
Okay. So with, with less than half of the budget year gone, we're above a hundred percent of the budget in the convenience center, and close to a hundred percent with the trash expense.
I didn't specifically bring those numbers. Well, hang on a minute, I'll probably do.
The convenience center's at a hundred and nineteen point three, and the trash expense is at eighty-three point one.
No, I just brought my summary numbers with me.
Oh, that's fine. I mean, it's not a huge deal right now. I just wanted to kind of get a handle on it and say, wow, I mean, it's, you know, up there. So.
Right. I'll take a closer look at that and get you some more information on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
If there's no further questions for Alicia, we'll move into the business, the rest of the business session. And we do have, I almost skipped the others and brought you on up, Jacqueline. Like, last time, I forgot you. This time, Jacqueline is on the agenda, so at that time, if you have the opportunity, you could address some of these. If not, we can address them tomorrow also. So at this time, I'm going to call on ten point two, which is the Fire Department, a refurbished pumper, and we have Chief Barnwell here.
Good evening, Commissioners. Appreciate you having me up here tonight. So over the past year, we've been looking at our fleet and trying to figure out the best way to maintain it and to keep expanding it and replacing trucks. And one of the things that we've come upon is refurbishing fire trucks that we already have. This comes at a third of the cost, and we get about another seven conservatively to ten years with light to moderate use. Light to moderate use would be the stations that don't run as many calls as other stations. So like Station Twelve, which is the truck we're talking about, would be refurbished and kept, and we think we'd get about another seven to ten years out of it, and it is a two thousand and four model pumper. So what I'm asking for is that we accept the bid from Williams Fire, who would do the refurb, the people that service our fire trucks, and they're the ones that actually do all the refurbs for Sutton in our area. We asked that we accept the bid of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-four to perform the refurbishment of Sutton Pumper Number HS three six oh one, which is currently assigned to Engine Twelve in Lowell.
Are there any questions?
Yeah. If, if we get these QRVs implemented, it's even going to help longer, right? You'll be able to...
Oh, yes, sir.
A longer lifespan on those vehicles.
Absolutely. The more QRVs you put in place around certain areas strategically placed, you slow those engines down even more. Yes.
And we are working on a plan for, I think we've, I think I've talked to Chuck just about every day, come to a new idea.
You want me to talk about that for a minute?
Miss, you want, from the conversation we had this morning.
Yeah. So we just took in, took a replacement for our Division Chief ride, which is the eight oh four ride. We got a new Ford on that one, and that truck is getting some repairs done to the rear end, and once it's done, it's going to be pushed out to the QRV fleet, or to the QRV project, to run one, two days a week, and try to figure out the best times and stuff to run that thing, so we can get that thing going in the next couple of two to three weeks. Okay?
This is a short-term project.
This is a short term.
The other two vehicles, if I'm not speaking out of turn, Danny, they're in Canada, waiting to get here. So, but in the meantime, I'm ready to get this going and not wait several, several months, so.
So we're going to put the thing on the road, the first one, and then as we get the trucks replaced, we're going to start putting one or two on the road and just kind of really tweak this thing out and get it going and try to slow these engines down. So, yeah, we could take Engine Twelve, as soon as we get approved, we can schedule it up, and it'll take about three months for that, three to six months, Eric? Six months? Six months to get it refurbished. And it's bumper to bumper, they'll redo the engine transmission pump, redo the interior, repaint it, and, but, almost a brand-new truck.
Okay, and where, where is this truck going to be stationed?
Station Twelve in Lowell.
In Lowell. Okay. So what about, what about the station at Clem? Are they going to get a...
Yes, theirs has been ordered. Their fire truck's been ordered. They're getting a brand-new.
Okay.
Any other questions for the chief? I'll look for a motion and a second to approve refurbishing a pumper engine.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Motion passes, seven zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Ten point three, we have the Carroll County Crisis Response Team, Lisa. I'm going to call on Jody Goodman. And I have to say, the Crisis Response Team group has been very helpful in working with Chuck, trying to figure out how to copy your model and rolling out our QRV. So thank y'all both for the time you're spending on this.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioners. We come before you tonight asking for your blessing and permission to use Station Sixteen, I'm so sorry, I always get that wrong, for a second dispatch location for the second unit of the Crisis Response Team. We received funding from the City of Villarica, Mayor and Council, for our, our second team, and we've hired a law enforcement officer. She is currently in training at the City of Carrollton Police Department, and we have, the second unit, thanks to you all, has been purchased, and we have received it, finally. It's being outfitted, and we have been in partnerships with the University of West Georgia. They've received funding from a COPS grant, and we are currently in the process of hiring the licensed professional counselor, and so we need a site, preferably on the north end of the county, which is the conditions of the funding from the City of Villarica. So in talking with the chairman and the chief, it looked like a good fit for Station Sixteen. So we're, we come to you with asking for your blessing, so.
And Sixteen's a one, Tumbling Creek, that has, you know, the extra side to it with all the space that was not really being used, so we thought it would make a nice spot. It's a perfect fit for...
Ms. Goodman, I spoke to Fire Chief Barnwell, and we had a conversation. You all do great work, but obviously bringing another institution into asking someone to share quarters, we wanted to make sure that was something you all were good with, and the chief has explained to me that that would not be an issue as far as operationally, you think everything would be a good fit.
Yeah, if you remember, Station Sixteen at Tumbling Lake Road is a, the separate part was the old sheriff, it was going to be the north precinct for the sheriff's office. I think they built it in oh eight. And that never really came to fruition because it was just way out there, and the population didn't expand like they thought it would. So we've got four offices on that side of the building that have just been sitting empty the whole time. Now, I'm keeping one for my hydrant tech, because he does his computer work in there. They're taking the other three, and, you know, as long as we can get some use out of it. It's separated from the living quarters, as far as the firefighters go, but, you know, we toured the place, and the guys were kind of excited about them coming over, and they wanted to show them all about the station and everything like that, and said they'd even cleared out a space in the back for them to park the car.
Which won't be necessary.
So, yeah, we're, we're good to go, and happy to have you.
My question's about liability and extra expenses, insurance liability and expenses, the extra expenses that we're going to incur.
So we would just be utilizing, let me stay it back in front of the mic, we would just be using actually two office spaces. We just decided to use the third office space as just a common space that we would share if necessary. Again, it would just be utilized one shift. We're still trying to work out the times of that shift, and it would just be for, for office, pure office space, eight hour, I'm sorry, ten hours a day, four days a week, because they, they work four tens every week. You know...
Most offices do have an expense.
Yes, sir.
And liability, liability on the premises. That's what concerns me.
Ms. Blackman, I spoke to you about the liability portion in the contract, and I know I didn't have a problem with the limits, but I think we were going to try to clarify the, or clarify what the per occurrence and then aggregate total amount of the policy work in that language in. Is that correct?
That's right. They, the lease calls for two million dollars in liability coverage for premises liability.
Okay. We'll be holding a certificate of...
Right, to be, and it says there will be an additional insured, so we're working with our insurance agent, and then with the, the mental health advocates, their insurance agent as well, to make sure we get the coverage we need.
I just have a comment and question. So first of all, as we all know, I mean, thanks for your work. I think it, it very much is an integral part of what the public needs and fills a very good role, as, as, you know, and I've seen Montreal there sometimes, too. The pastor's luncheon in Carrollton each month talks... The pastor's luncheon in Carrollton each month, uh, talks frequently about, uh, crisis intervention, behavioral health needs, and, uh, and compliment your work there, too. So, uh, my only question, I guess, is just from a coordination standpoint, since we have the fire department, the sheriff's office, and, and now mental health, I'm, I'm looking like longer term, I guess, from a systematic approach to getting you where you need to be. And, and my idea is that your work is more coordinated with the sheriff's office response than it is a fire department response. But, uh, with this location being at a fire department versus a sheriff's office, and I know, I guess, we don't even have a sheriff's office currently in that area. So, uh, I, I just see this as a little bit of a, a hodgepodge approach, and I'm, I'm not completely sold on, uh, is, is your work going to be, I guess, adequately coordinated from that area, it being a fire department versus a sheriff's office location? And do we have plans for, uh, sheriff's office to be located there eventually, or what is?
Well, I certainly can't speak on behalf of the sheriff's office, but, um, I will say that, you know, we did contact the sheriff's office. And they had no plans, um, for the use of that facility for which it was built for. Um, you know, we didn't overstep any, any boundaries there, um, and they were in agreement with our, the, the Crisis Response Team utilizing the space. Um, as far as operating with, in coordination with the, the fire department, um, it is completely separated off. Our unit operates as first responders, just like the fire department. They answer calls through number one dispatch.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, they operate as a police unit, um, first responding unit, just like the fire department does. They answer their own calls. Um, I wish I was better equipped to answer, answer that question, because I'm not a first responder. Um, but, I mean, they, they're self-sufficient in that they answer their own calls as they're, as they're requested. So maybe chief can answer that better than I can.
So when we respond to calls, we go to medical calls as well and psych calls, we call them psych calls, psychiatric distress calls. We go to those occasionally. They go to them all the time. The building is separated enough to where they're not, we're not going to cross paths a lot. You know, unless it's just, hey, y'all want to come eat. That's about, that's about the only path they're going to cross. And, uh, as far as responding, that gives us an opportunity to learn a little bit more about that type of response from them. And it, it kind of builds that relationship even more as we continue to go down the road and respond to different types of calls in the future.
And maybe in the future, I mean, there could be a, a longer-term approach, and we could more systematically approach, say, a five, eight-year plan of where you need to be and how you're going to coordinate with the.
Absolutely.
Yeah, down the road. That's all I'm looking for.
Absolutely. I mean, I think it's definitely a possibility.
Commissioner, let me say this right here. I work with the Child Advocacy Center, and they deal with MDTs all the time, multi, multidisciplinary teams. Anytime you can create that atmosphere in, in public safety, it's a good thing for the public. So these guys, like he said, they make calls to, uh, uh, mental, people with mental health issues on occasion. And then this team, obviously, that's, that's what they do. Um, so, I mean, it's, I don't think we should be looking at it as, you know, you guys do this and we do this over here. We need to look at it as this is our public, um, uh, response team, period. And this is just another facet of, of what we can do for the public, instead of worried about, you know, if it's, if it's a liability here. Everything these guys do is a liability, period. And that's, that's, I mean, that's, that's a choice we make to pick up and take care of on the back end with insurance and things like that. It's just, it's a part of the job. So, you know, I've been around multidisciplinary teams. I've seen, you know, things like this work and operate. This is very unique that they're able to do this, and no, they're not going to, you know, go out with the fire department and things like that. But there are times when these two may need to work together, or the sheriff's department need to work, or one of the, the city, uh, police department needs to step in with this team right here. I mean, so, you know, I've seen these guys kind of out on the street working, and this is, I mean, this is, this is a good thing for the citizens of Carroll County. Being an educator, I can tell you, they go out on calls sometimes, and I've taught some of these students, and, and, and I've, I've, I've just dealt with some of the issues. They're adults now, they're in public, and the last thing they really need is to be put in the back of a police car. This is the last thing they need. And that's their job to walk up and assess that, you know, and, and as this team, you know, as they work together, I mean, they can pull the resources in to help each other as they need those resources. So, I mean, this is, this is actually, I mean, in my opinion, I think it's a, a really, a really good thing that's happening there to see you guys just kind of working together and, and happy that we actually have the room to be able to accommodate on that side of Carroll County.
And to piggyback on Commissioner McClendon is, you know, you talk about a five-to-eight-year plan or whatever, you know. Planning down the road, the QRVs are going to be the ones that are responding to that. The first QRV right now is planned to be stationed at Sixteen. So that gives that opportunity to start learning that aspect of it and build that five-ten, the future planning as far as what our response is going to be and what kind of delivery, service delivery are we going to offer the citizens of Carroll County in conjunction with Crisis Response, Sheriff's Department, Tanner Medical with the new ambulance acquisitions and stuff like that. So we've got a lot of stuff coming down the road, and this is going to be a good year.
And I'd like to, I would like to, uh, go a little bit more in-depth to, to my comments. This board is charged with fiscal responsibility. This board is charged with approving, uh, contracts. This board is charged with the cohesiveness of funding the different departments. So my questioning here today has nothing to do about Ms. Goodman's capabilities, about the importance of her department and what she does. Uh, you can go out right now and find other first responder units that will tell you they do not want the ambulance at the fire department. They do not want this one in this department. It has nothing to do that they're not all on the same team. People get very protective of their space, so to speak. So my comments and my questions today have nothing to do with challenging the good work that you do. I'm simply trying to perform my duties, because people do have different opinions, and this is something brand-new that we're doing. We don't have another intergovernmental department in any other fire station within Carroll County. So to stop at simply saying you do good work and not ask any questions, I don't feel I would be doing my job. So I just want to clarify my comments and my questions today.
Yes, sir.
And I do think, in the future, I mean, your type of work will be needed more. It, it's not, it's not going to decrease, and so I just want to make sure that we, we do take steps to have a very coordinated, comprehensive approach for your type of work in that area, because the public, as you say, is going to need it more. So this is a good first step, I guess.
If there's no further questions, I'll ask for a motion in a second to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. There's no further questions or comments for a chief or for Jody or? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, seven zero. Thank you, Jody. Thank you, chief. Next, I'm going to call Jacqueline Doss with Solid Waste. We have two things with you tonight. The first one is our Temple Convenience Center.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you, Chairman Morgan. I come to you, uh, first of all, with three bids for the fencing at the Temple Convenience Center. As you know, Public Works has started in the past year to renovate the center. They have done a tremendous job hauling away all the dirt, doing the grading. We are now, um, at the point where the, um, area that has now been graded and will be the extension of the center needs to be fenced in for security, so we can begin the installation, which is the second part of my ask. I went out and got three bids from three local fence companies, and, um, I presented them with their summary, with my recommendation. And after discussing it with Mr. Pope and Mr. Yates to get their recommendation, I am asking for approval for the chairman to entertain a contract with, uh, West Georgia Fence Company, that is a known vendor in Carroll County, to, um, um, contract for that fence. That is my first ask. Do you want me to do all together, Chairman?
No, let's do one at a time. So, um, are there any questions for Jacqueline on the expense of a fence for the Temple Convenience Center? Well, seeing and hearing none, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion in a second, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Again, if there's any questions or discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of accepting, um, West Georgia Fence Company for the Temple Convenience Center? Motion passes, seven zero. Okay, great. All right, Jacqueline, now we'll move you into ten point five with the Recycling Waste Reduction and Diversion Grant.
Actually, there, there were actually two parts to that, that we also need to just, I want to make sure that, um, the commissioners are all aware that we will still have some expenses with the Temple Convenience Center for the concrete and everything else. We're not at a point yet to entertain any contracts. That money is there, um, in Public Works for a previous project that didn't need it. And, um, Mr. Yates and Mr. Pope has graciously agreed that we can use those funds. I just want to make sure that we have what we need to install those compactors that have been sitting at Public Works for a while.
Great. Thank you for that clarification.
And yes, I'm going to actually call Martina Griffin, the Executive Director of Keep Carroll Beautiful, to join me. And we're going to talk about this very exciting grant that we were awarded recently. I'm going to let her speak to a little bit of the specifics, but I just want the board to understand, this is a new grant program from EPD. We are one of the first grantees, and we were granted one hundred percent of our ask, based on a lot of legwork that both Martina and Amy Goolsbee did. I reached out and we got letters of support from all of the other municipalities to support our ask for this. So, um, it's really very exciting that we have been awarded that. Martina?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Marty Griffin, and I'm the Director of Keep Carroll Beautiful, and I am extremely excited about this grant, uh, as it gives us an opportunity to recycle way more material than we did in the last few years, which I think we're steadily growing more and more, um, of the collections of our hard-to-recycle materials. So this grant is basically targeted at removing, uh, waste from the landfill streams in Georgia. The landfills are overflowing, there are no new ones being built, landfills are controversial. So Georgia is doing whatever they can to remove as much recyclable materials or materials that can be, um, removed from the stream, like yard debris can be composted, for example. So they are putting that money forward for municipalities to use against, um, basically recyc, for rec, removing recyclables from the landfill streams. So in our proposal, uh, we asked for, um, let me get my numbers. We asked for about twenty thousand dollars for the recycling fees for five of the common recycling events that we hold as Keep Carroll Beautiful every year. That includes two rounds of electronics recycling, and the spring one is also hosted in Villarica. Typically, we host that event with Southwire in Carrollton. Uh, we are also going to have at least one round of our household hazardous waste recycling, which collects paint, fluorescent bulbs, mercury batteries, things that are toxic and potentially harmful to the environment, our groundwaters, our agricultural land. So we try to take as many of those harmful items out of the, uh, trash stream, too. And also the Tire of Tires events that were actually funded through another, um, Georgia, um, EPD grant that we conducted for the last three, um, half-years. So we had three of those, uh, events that we ran with Jacqueline at the Solid Waste, and we, um, brought in around seventy tons of tire, tires each of those events for the last, um, three, three times. So just to give you a perspective, before that, that tire grant, that is a separate grant from the one that we're discussing today, we would collect twenty-four tons of tires every two years, because we could only get funding to run that event, basically every, every two years, more or less. With the last or the first grant of this cycle, we collected seventy tons of tires. Seventy-seven was the second round of the, of the funding, and now we are still waiting for the final numbers, but I'm assuming we'll be around sixty tons, uh, for the collection. And that saved Carroll County and Keep Carroll Beautiful thirty thousand dollars this year alone on recycling fees. And that also, um, we still are waiting for the numbers for twenty twenty-two for the roadside collections, but that grant also helps the Public Works, uh, because it reduces the number of tire dumps in the community. So we're excited about looking at the statistics and seeing if it really lowers the number of tires people drop on the side of the road, too. But if we work together with Carroll County and the Solid Waste, we had great results, uh, looking, you know, at, at the items that we typically collect. So if you guys have any questions?
One question that I've got, I represent the northern end, so I really like that you have a site. I think you've done stuff at the V-Plax before in Villarica, so maybe I shouldn't have been asking the question. But we're talking about Villarica, you do something, in the City of Carrollton, you do something with, which is obviously the two largest municipalities. Do you do anything as far as a drop-off location on the south end of the more rural areas of the county? Or as far as maybe trying to get more participation from there? Or do you feel like those people are driving and coming anyways when they hear about free tire drop-offs, or just kind of curious about the model?
The tire recycling definitely brings people from all over the county. Our e-recycling events, electronics collection, and the hazardous waste typically bring more people from, from central Carroll County and mostly from Carrollton. But we have a decent population coming in from, from other municipalities. I feel like with, with the resources that we will now have thanks to this grant, we can put a lot more money into advertising those events and educating the public on where the locations are, what are the rules, that those events are completely free to the public. And also, part of the funding coming in is for collection bins that we, uh, will basically drop off at the different cities in Carroll County. We ordered seven sets of those. I hope we counted right, but we will have, uh, two bins per location. So, uh, we hope to work with the municipalities. As Keep Carroll Beautiful, we do not have resources to collect those items in every town in, in Carroll County, but we hope to at least make it possible for a pickup. The companies will work for hazardous waste and e-recycling pickup from a location. So as long as there is a secure location for the municipalities to collect items in and store them for just a little while, we should be able to allow them to also have those collection around the time of the events.
Thank you.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
I guess, so this particular, and it, it's always, you know, nearly always great to get state money to do things. Uh, I'm, I'm glad for that. But this grant won't have to do, did I understand you right, with the tire collection stuff?
That's correct.
Okay.
The tires are covered with the separate grant that is covering up to fifty thousand dollars of tire fees per year per municipality. So that grant is not going away. We're, we received a new grant for newer cycling streams.
Okay. To implement this or do this, will there be costs to the county in addition to this grant?
The only cost to the county that is mentioned in the match is around three thousand dollars in in-house production of signage that already is at the convenience centers. Uh, I, I noticed that you guys had a question earlier about the tipping fees and the trash, basically, um, being, you know, utilizing more of the funds that everybody was anticipating. This type of grant and education and better signage for the convenience centers, which also is a part of the grant funding, the signage, updating the signage at the convenience centers in Carroll County. We are hoping, and we actually put some goals, um, um, in that grant, too. We're hoping to improve recycling in Carroll County through the education and better signage by hopefully fifteen percent this upcoming year. So that would come with an initial cost to Carroll County, but hopefully that will also reduce dramatically the tipping fees for the trash going to the landfill as well. And if you look at the glass recycling, which we were able to, uh, work with the county and bring back at the beginning, I mean, at the end of twenty twenty-one, October twenty-one to October twenty twenty-two, uh, Carroll County collected seventy-three point six tons of glass. And at the forty-five dollars fee per ton, that is a saving of thirty-three hundred twelve dollars for glass alone. And I know this is not a huge number, but I feel like it's a good start. And the three thousand dollars the county is going to put in basically can be saved by, by, uh, better recycling and lowering the tipping fees, selling the recycled material, and, um, that's, that's kind of the hope for, for the grant.
And we're talking the signs that our sign shop at Public Works already makes.
Yeah.
So, um, and then on to, to speak to the glass as well. Once the temple renovation is done, there will be space for an additional glass bin at the temple location as well. So we'll have three glass bins, three areas in the county where residents can drop off glass.
Okay, so, and I'm, I'm glad to hear that, but the ten-thousand-foot view, as I see it right now, again, I'm, I'm all for systematic, uh, methodological approaches to government. Uh, it's been my whole career, but, uh, career, but this, as far as recycling or not, is just, recycling, as I've been told, is a learned habit. So the more the public has consistency in recycling for glass, recycling for fluorescent bulbs, recycling for A, B, C, D, E, the better over time that recycling effort is. The 10,000-foot view is that we had that, and then, from what I've learned and what my constituents have told me and so on, then, then, in other words, the public is being pushed and pulled, or shoved this way and shoved that way, because we had recycling, they developed the habits, and then, oops, we took it away. And then there were no longer recycling efforts, because supposedly it costs more to transport this or that that was recycled than we benefited, so we took that away. Now, we get the grant, and oops, we're now recycling, but only here or there, or only for bulbs or glass or, and it's like, oh my goodness, I mean, how can the public form any good recycling habits with this kind of push-and-pull, stop-and-go approach to recycling? That's what bothers me. It's just like a, there's no consistency.
And if I can make one last comment, the traditional recycling, when we're talking about glass, cardboard, tin, metal, aluminum, those streams are available at the majority of the Carroll County convenience centers. There are a few that don't recycle as many items as others, so I believe that is not something that we're trying to change or update. We're trying to make a public education campaign with the funds we're receiving from this to boost our recycling rates and hopefully clear up the information that is available, especially at the convenience centers. Because like you said, things are being added, things are being removed right now. The signage, I think, is maybe a little bit confusing at some spots. So hopefully with this, in the long-term, you know, plan is to better collect those items that are traditionally recycled and are easy to recycle. I believe the cardboard, the metals are being sold locally, and the county makes a little bit of money on that, on those materials. The collection of electronics, paint, the hazardous waste was always a special event. We call those materials hard-to-recycle, because it's very hard to collect them and keep them safe in a convenience center setting. So those events were always kind of a Keep Carol Beautiful way of supplementing what the county and the cities were doing. And, you know, as much as we were trying to do our best and reach everybody, that is a little bit of an extra added thing to the county recycling efforts. And the glass was a good example. It wasn't worth paying for this, but we were able to work with the county and with the glass company, and now the county is not paying anything for glass recycling at all. That is at no cost to the county at all, and if anything happens and the load has to go to a landfill, Keep Carol Beautiful is actually on the hook for those fees. So the county will not pay for anything, even if there are costs associated with this. So I understand that this is a small drop in the bucket, and it's not going to make a huge change immediately, but we are hoping to, you know, start changing those habits a little bit. And I live in Carrollton, the recycling, the curb side recycling was very convenient. Now, you know, I cannot do this anymore, so my job requirement is to actually take it to the recycling center, but I know a lot of my neighbors are not. So we're trying to educate and make those habits a little more easy for people to get back into, but like you said, it's a hard thing, and rules are changing all the time, materials are changing all the time, recycling is shifting like everything else. So we're trying to basically bring back as much of this as we can and help the county not incur too many costs. So out of the $11,500 of a match, we're actually bringing in the $8,500 in radio ads, and the county is producing the signs. So we're trying to keep the county out of the, you know, the cost for this as much as we can, but I feel like this will be a good return on your investment. And hopefully I can come back in a year and say that we reached our goals and the county was able to save, you know, $20,000 on the tipping fees, so.
Well, I would just encourage you to take, I mean, when you work in any area, it's, you can get rather myopic. And so if you could take a 10, 20,000-foot view and understand what the public is going through, because they don't know whether in the world we're recycling or not. I mean, this year we are, next month we're not, this year it's only this, next time it's these products, and now we get a state grant, we're doing this. I mean, lands, I feel sorry for the public, because they don't know what we're doing. So maybe, I would just encourage a systematic, ongoing approach as much as possible, so that, yes, recycling could pay off, and it could be a good thing, but if it happens based on developing habits, then we can't keep pushing and pulling the public hither, sither, and yon. You know, they either need to know what we're doing or what we're not doing. And that's my point.
Absolutely. So I have a motion in a second, correct?
No.
You haven't done it yet.
Looking at Montreal, because he's supposed to keep me straight, but Clint, yeah. So could I have a motion in a second to accept this grant, please?
I make a motion to accept the grant with Carroll County's matching commitment of $11,500.
No, 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 there's no matching. It was just in-kind.
No, in-kind of $3,500.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the grant agreement says a match, in-kind match of 11,500, so I think...
It is an in-kind match, but it's not all coming from Carroll County.
Right, but we need to sign the agreement, so can you approve the 11,500?
Well, I would like, since there seems to be a bit of confusion from what I've read, and it seems like legal counsel is saying something different. If legal counsel could speak the motion, and then I will say as read.
The, if you can approve the motion, item 10.5, as listed in the agenda, which has the grant with the in-kind match of $11,500.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second to approve the grant as written, as 10.5 within the agenda. All right, this time I will ask for all those in favor, any opposed?
Motion passes, seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Thank you, Marty.
Coming to you with some positive results.
I know. Now going to call Thad Ferguson, the Recreation Director. He has 10.6 and 10.7. We'll start with 10.6, please.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. 10.6 is our AVI force machine, so this is basically looking to acquire a new infill machine for our ball fields. We have eight fields that we take care of year-round. They get a lot of use, nine of the 11, 12 months, four to five, six days a week, just depending on the season. This particular machine is a demo model. Our maintenance staff was able to go to Roswell back this fall to a Parks and Rec Field Maintenance Day. Basically, we have these two or three times a year, and they're able to see different vendors, different machines or equipment that we're able to use in Parks and Rec. And they were able to use this particular machine. This machine's kind of been on their radar for a couple of years now. In early December, our maintenance coordinator, Jim, received an email from John, who is part of Tri-State Pump, with this demo model that they're willing to sell. It's got 60 hours on it, sell it with an ads new warranty on it. This particular machine is very user-friendly, multifunctional, has the ability to add multiple different attachments with seed spreaders, rakes, aerators, edgers, scoops, which is kind of like a front-end loader bucket attachment. And even for those cold winter days, it can even put a snowplow on there. So it's super functional. The biggest asset it would be for us is currently, this machine comes with a mini box plate attachment, which would help us to be able to delip our infills, basically where the dirt and the grass meet. And it would also allow us to laser grade the fields in-house. And that's a huge saving, pairing those two together. The last time we got a quote on six fields, it was around $15,000. So we have eight fields now. So this would be a huge savings just from the delipping and the laser grading on a yearly basis, that we really need to do those fields on. Again, it's got the warranty, it's about $9,400 cheaper than a new model, so it's a savings, a pretty good savings there. So we would love to have approval to purchase this equipment for the rec.
Mr. Ferguson, we spoke earlier, and there is the option for an extended warranty, but you do not have the figures with you here this evening. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I actually emailed John, who was sitting here, and I haven't heard back from him, but.
Okay, I'm showing, I'm showing a $12,000 difference, $31,000 and some change for the demo, and the new was at $43,000, unless I broke down those numbers incorrect.
Taking off sales tax.
Okay.
So it'd be 31 versus 40.
Okay. Whether I make the motion or not, I would like for us to consider an extended warranty not to exceed 15% of the total purchase amount, if we give the chairman the leeway to make that purchase, because if we're already saving $10,000, we can buy another two or three years, I don't know what they would offer, for $2,000 or $3,000. I think we need to take advantage of that. If the chairman sees fit, after looking at the information, we're still going to save several thousand dollars.
And I'll be glad to pass that along once I get back that information.
If there's no further questions for Thad, I will accept a motion in a second.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the demo model with an option for the chairman to purchase an extended warranty not to exceed 15% of the purchase amount.
Second.
Can I have a motion in a second? Is there any further questions or discussion? Well, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of purchasing the equipment from Tri-State Pump and Control. Any opposed?
Motion passes, seven zero.
Great, thank you, Thad. We'll let you move into 10.7, some playground equipment.
Playground equipment. So two of our playground sections, one of our baseball fields, which we call our lower pod, which has four fields, and our softball field, our upper pod of three, both of these are in dire need of playground restoration, renovation. They were probably put in, to my knowledge, roughly 20 years ago, late 1990s, early 2000s. So they are well outdated. Anytime we have tried to replace or repair parts of the equipment, we haven't been able to, just because they don't make those parts anymore. So we have been looking back and forth at playgrounds, and currently, what you have in front of you is for one playground, this is at our baseball field. We want to start here, because this one gets the majority of our action. This is where we do more of our, the participants are really 10 and under in this age group, so all the siblings really coordinate around this particular area. So we reached out to multiple playground vendors. In the playground world, there's basically two monopolies. We have PlayCor, which Corcat and Game Time are both under PlayCor. So it's kind of like Coca-Cola, you can get a Diet Coke, or Meliela, so many different varieties, but Corcat and Game Time are actually both owned by PlayCor. Corcat is local, based here in Carrollton, Game Time is based in Florida, but just like anything else, you know, all those reps are very local as well. So both Corcat and Game Time bid on very similar equipment pieces, from slides to swings to monkey bar-type equipment. And you'll see that the biggest difference in their two quotes comes down to installation, freight, and the equipment to put in, like a solid rubber floor base. So currently, we have mulch, and we have to refill the mulch buckets, you know, the pattern so often. They've got to be about 10 inches thick, so we would like to go with this solid rubber floor that we don't have to replace every year, and basically just re-coat it every year with a special coating, and that allows this rubber to stay together, stay compacted, and last for 10 to 15 years. So we would love to be able to get this new playground from Corcat with your approval.
So Commissioners, do you have any further questions for Thad?
Just one quick one. So when would this be installed and totally done?
From what I'm told, it's going to be roughly April, just due to back time and inventory. They do a lot of inventory at the beginning of the year, so they said it would be three to four months on a good scale, so.
Okay, at this time, I'll accept a motion in a second for the acceptance of the equipment for two playgrounds at the Recreation Complex.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. If there's no further questions or discussion. All those in favor, any opposed?
Motion passes, seven zero.
Great, thank you, Thad. All right, 10.8, we're going to turn over to District Commissioner, District Two Commissioner Clint Chance.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, you have before you this evening a recommendation from the committee that I served on regarding hiring a construction manager at risk to build the new Villarica Fire Station Number Nine. I'd like to take a moment and recognize those committee members. Some of them are here today. Fire Chief Chuck Barnwell, Deputy Fire Chief Dave Wade, firefighter and lead Cody Mayfield, Public Works Superintendent Danny Yates, and myself, served as the voting members of the committee. I'd also like to thank Carroll County Purchasing Agent Sunday Cook, Fire Rescue Administrative Assistant Michelle Mahaney, and our Facilities Consultant David Goodhead, who all assisted us throughout this entire process. I'd also like to point out, this is the same committee that has remained intact, that was put together for the process in hiring the architect, and also who has worked on the design thus far, even though there's be some more design phases that will take place after we hire the manager at risk. So thank them all for the work that they have done and their commitment. Really quick, there are several different ways, obviously, that we can go about advertising and building a facility such as this. We chose the construction manager at risk. This is a method where the county is hiring a construction manager to oversee the project from design to construction closeout, and it's being delivered with a guaranteed maximum price prior to the bid stage. So essentially, instead of advertising a hard bid, we're basically hiring a company to come in and manage this, that will work closely with the architect on the front end, and basically tell us a scope or a maximum price that they will deliver the product in. We felt like this was the route to go for a couple of different reasons. The first reason is, many times in construction, you will see an architect point to the construction company when something's wrong, or vice versa. Here, they're kind of forced to have to work together, if you will. If the county or the owner so chooses to have change orders, it's something we want to see in the building ourselves in the future. Obviously, we'd be responsible for that, but otherwise, this is something that they're taking on the liability. The second component is the unstable, unstableness in the economy with the labor market, also with materials and so forth. We felt that this would hopefully not render us any surprises later on in the project. We would know what we were facing on the front end. So just a little bit of history of why we chose to advertise the RFP for that particular process. I also want to thank all the firms that responded to the RFP process. Obviously, everyone sends in a packet with the intent that they're going to win the bid, and obviously, only one person can be awarded, but thank you for all those that took the time and the effort, not only to submit the packets and respond, but for everyone that came out and did a presentation for their particular company. We posted the RFP on October the 18th, not only to our Carroll County website, but also to the Georgia Procurement Registry. So those, that's, I think, looked at nationwide, where people go on there and see what type RFPs are available for them to bid on. We had three qualified proposals submitted, and those were submitted on November the 18th. From there, each committee member had an opportunity to review and research the packets that were presented, minus the monetary portion of the proposal, which was reserved for a later date. And that was done intentionally so that there would be nothing that we were looking at from a monetary perspective in trying to evaluate the quality of the effectiveness in all the different areas that we looked at in trying to score these individuals. So nothing was looked at on the front end from the voting members of the committee as far as what the price structure would look at, would look like. On Wednesday, December the 7th, the committee met to discuss the findings of our research, and all the members had an opportunity to share with the group any research that they had done. On Thursday, December the 8th, the committee met and conducted interviews. We conducted interviews with all three applicants that were qualified, that submitted packets to us, proposals. All three of the firms were allotted a specific amount of time that started on a pre-designated timeframe. Each had 45 minutes in which to make a presentation, and then there was a 45-minute question-and-answer session from the voting members of the committee. The next phase was the scoring of each of the firms, minus the were requiring of them. Fifteen point, total points, uh, were capable of being allotted for the firm's personnel and their qualifications that would not only be working in-house, if you will, but would also be working on a site as far as a project manager, uh, or superintendent that was presented to us at those meetings. Ten points was, uh, a total allotment that could be earned for their current workload, so we wanted to look at the firm's capability of how many ongoing projects they had, and could they substantiate and handle our project if, if they took us on. Another ten points was allotted for the scheduling of the project, so we looked at the timeframe, uh, that each one of these presented. Um, the low, uh, timeframe does not necessarily mean it's the best. It was also the believability of, do you think that the, that the facility can be built in a certain timeframe? So that was the other ten points that, um, was a total of the sixty-five percent. Uh, the committee reconvened on Wednesday, December the twenty-first to listen, uh, to Mr. David Goodhead, who is our Facilities Consultant, presentation of his analysis on the monetary portions of the submittal, which were allotted, uh, for thirty-five percent of the scoring. So he was the expert that we utilized, and I'm going to be calling him up in just a moment to talk about the analysis that he underwent, uh, at looking at the monetary portions and the different sections that we specifically asked in the RFP process. I do want to point out that on the first sixty-five percent, each committee member scored independently, so no other committee member knew what their fellow committee member was scoring on the first sixty-five percent. Uh, we had obviously discussions beforehand, but that was independently done, so there was no, um, coercion, if you will, or anything in how that's scoring. Everyone had their independent right to, to score the first sixty-five percent. Upon completion, uh, of hearing Mr. Goodhead's analysis, um, those points were allotted the final thirty-five percent, and then the committee, uh, looked at the total possible of a hundred points, and we, those were tallied. The, the high score earner was Caliber One Construction Company from Villarica, and we voted upon them, uh, as the committee to formally accept the point system scale that we had advertised, and formally accept them as the recommendation to bring before the Board of Commissioners. And before I ask if any of the, uh, chairman or commissioners have any specific questions for me, I'd like for Mr. Goodhead to come forward, and if he could, give us a little bit of an explanation of his analyzation on the monetary portions of the RFP, uh, packets that were presented.
Good evening, all Commissioners. Um, there's three categories that we judge based on general conditions, fee, and time. So your cost of your work is plus a fee. Caliber one, got a good score there, they were the lowest fee. I think off the top of my head, I have my sheet with me, it was two point seven eight. You have my sheet with you? Basically, we take three scores, bring it together, so at the beginning of the RFP, I established the general conditions by time. So I said you have twelve months to build the fire station, three months of pre-construction. Some people chose to say it took fourteen, some people chose, say it takes X. So we took the twelve months, we took the three months of pre-construction to do it. Now whether those lap a little bit, that'll be decided more. We established the general conditions fee. In the general conditions is their management, their overhead, their burden, their labor. And then you have cost of work items, dumpsters, things that people that are in construction mind, don't understand what I'm talking about. We took all that as cost of work, that is outside the general conditions fee. So you take those three categories, and you summarize the total price based on the request of the RFP that we said, ten months, twelve months, fourteen. We did not take, we've treated everybody fairly, so if somebody said fourteen, we backed into the twelve months and the dollars due. So thirty-five points went to Caliber One. They were low, they were the highest number after the interviews, based on your committee, which is basically each committee member may have ranked somebody one, two, or three, but as you take the whole score of a fifty-nine or a fifty-eight, and you run it the calculations together, that's how Caliber One stayed at number one. So when you take the three of them, your thirty-five points are awarded to them, the other two, one got thirty-two point seven eight, the other one got like thirty-one point seven eight. With that score, it still makes Caliber One in number one. Now, there's some things in the general conditions that we'll need to negotiate if that's what y'all are going to go for. There's still some items on that, that they're going to have to sit unexplainably, that I didn't want to have that conversation at that time. So any questions from the board?
Well, seeing and hearing no questions, I'll look for a motion in a second.
I need to recuse from this vote. I actually do work for Caliber One.
Madam Chairman, I would make a motion to accept the committee's recommendation and award the construction manager contract to Caliber One with the understanding that the final negotiation and agreement execution will be handed by the chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there any further questions or discussions? Well, seeing and hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of using Caliber One as our construction manager at risk for the fire station in Villarica? Any opposed?
Motion passes, six zero.
Good job, David.
And we'll make a note in the minutes that, um, Commissioner Lee had to...
Recuse.
Okay, great, thank you. Next, we'll move into ten point nine, an appointment, uh, for District Six of Plan and Zoning Board, and I'll turn this over to, uh, Commissioner Danny Bailey.
Uh, I appoint Jamie Beam as, uh, for the Planning and Zoning Board. He is a pastor, a local pastor, and he's a former employee of Carroll County, has served as a building inspector, uh, I think he'll do a fine job at this point.
So would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Um, all those in favor of appointing Jamie Beam for District Six Plan and Zoning? Any opposed?
Motion passes, seven zero.
Great, the next one is ten point ten. Again, it is Commissioner Danny Bailey with an appointment to the Community Development Board of Appeals.
Make a motion that we appoint Mr. Bill Hodge. He's also a local resident, so he's served on the, uh, as a county extension agent and also on the, uh, Carroll County Chamber of Commerce, and I think he's a good, solid individual, he do a good job there.
Great. Would you like to make a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Motion passes, seven zero.
Great, now at this time, it's ten point eleven, I have an election for a vice chair. And to remind everybody, the vice chairman's position is only to lead a meeting in case the chairman is absent. Um, maybe I'll be doing that twelve times next year. No, actually, this current year, I'll go... So anyway, I think my track record's pretty strong, but I'll look for a motion in a second.
I make a motion, Clint Chance.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, any questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of Clint Chance being our vice chair? Any opposed?
Motion passes, six zero.
Great. Um, at this time, we're going to move into executive session. Um, we will probably stop all recording because we will not be taking any action when we return from executive session, so... Oh, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting, we got to vote, sit down, Tommy. Um, could I have a motion and a second to move us into executive session?
Make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor moving into executive session? Anybody opposed? Okay, at this time, we will adjourn.